Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, January 30th, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be discussed by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Reverend Burgess is the chair. Bill number 1303. Resolution amending Resolution 878 effective December 2018 entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2019 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code, so as to replace the attached fee schedule and update the effective date." Bill number 1304. Resolution amending Resolution 843 of 2018 by changing the budget year from 2018 to 2019 and providing for the issuance of a warrant and the total sum of $8,000 in favor of Kathleen Kasunick and her attorneys Elliott and Davis, fully releasing the city from all claims and liabilities for alleged property damages as described in a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill number 1306. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Carol Katz in an amount not to exceed $3,200 for mediation services rendered to the parties in a federal litigation case. Bill number 1307. Resolution amending Resolution 29 of 2019, providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Kramer, Mains &amp; Associates and Roy Cox in an amount not to exceed $19,000 in full and final settlement of an action filed with the Pittsburgh Human Relations Commission and cross-filed with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission by changing the budget year from 2018 to 2019. Bill number 1313. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I Administrative Human Resources, Chapter 192 Pension at General Provisions, Section 192.01 Definitions, and also at Municipal Benefit Plan Number Two, Section 192.23 Municipal Benefits, in order to allow interest payments or withdrawals from the municipal pension plan and to authorize the calculation of interest. This bill was sponsored by Council President Bruce Kraus. Bill number 1316. Resolution providing for a professional services agreement or existing agreements for consulting services, but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services with the City Controller's Office at a cost not to exceed $135,000. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the chair. Bill number 1308. Resolution amending Resolution 231 of 2018 entitled, "Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh for providing of police services at the Housing Authority City of Pittsburgh properties over a three-year term in order to update account numbers." This bill was sponsored by Reverend Burgess. Bill number 1310. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Dolan Consulting Group in an amount not to exceed $9,950 for verbal de-escalation training for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police. Public Works Committee, Mrs. Kelsmith is the chair. Bill number 1295. Resolution amending Resolution 701 of 2015 to now read as follows. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with PennDOT under which PennDOT will make improvements to and transfer industrial highway approximately 1.2 miles of roadway to the city and the city will transfer to PennDOT two current city street segments, those street segments being Euclid Avenue from Baum Boulevard to Center Avenue approximately 347 feet and Center Avenue from Euclid Avenue to Howland Avenue approximately 1,017 feet. Bill number 1312. Resolution authorizing the transfer by the City of Pittsburgh to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation certain public right-of-way and temporary construction easements right on certain property on the 22nd, 32nd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh in cooperation with the PennDOT construction project. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the chair. Bill number 1311. Resolution adopting planned revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the Pittsburgh Produce Terminal redevelopment project. The existing building will be converted from produce warehouse office space into a combination retail, restaurant, entertainment, and office center. The parking lot to the rear will be updated to meet current standards, and this site is located on the north side of Smallman Street between 16th and 21st Streets in the second ward of the City of Pittsburgh. That concludes the reading of the legislation today. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome on this very frigid day to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee meeting of Wednesday, January 30th, 2019. As always, our first order of business is public comment. Members of the public who want to address us on this frigid day, you'll be given three minutes. Yellow light means their time has begun. Yellow light means one minute summarized. Red light means your time is expired. Please relinquish the podium. Start off with your name and city neighborhood.
Dan Sullivan, 420 29th Street, McKeesport. I moved from East Liberty because I can't afford East Liberty anymore. Happily for you guys, I don't want to talk about guns and I don't want to talk about the Affordable Housing Fund, the two most polarized issues that have combined lately. But I do want to talk about crime and I do want to talk about affordability for two reasons. One is I think they're linked, and the other is that Pittsburgh was in the 80s when we got One Place's Rated Almanac. We had the lowest crime rate of the 100 largest cities and we were the most affordable of the 100 largest cities. This wasn't always true. In 1906, we were second to New York City in the highest rents and we had extremely high crime and we had terrible government corruption that resulted in the whole city council system being scrapped. And then they passed a thing called land value tax, which made it very expensive to sit on vacant land and relatively cheap to improve the land because the tax was lower on the improvements and higher on the land. And we gradually became more and more affordable, didn't have any housing bubbles. Even in the Depression, we didn't have housing bubbles. Our land value fell 9% in the City of Pittsburgh. It fell 11% in DC, which was the boom town of the Depression. It fell between 45 and 65% in other cities. And the reason for that is we hadn't inflated in the first place because people were not speculating on Pittsburgh land. Or if they were speculating, they'd get a little bit of land and improve it to generate the revenue to pay the land value tax. So we constantly rolled with the punches and we had very stable, very affordable housing prices all that time. And we continued with that until 2000 when the county sabotaged the land assessments. And we abandoned the land value tax in 2000 and we're now having our first housing bubble and it's a serious bubble. One of the reasons it's serious is because we had such a good reputation for never having a crash that all the people in other cities said Pittsburgh's the great place to invest. They didn't know why we're the great place to invest and they didn't know why we are no longer the great place to invest because we get those bubbles just like everybody else now. So I would like to see us look at trying to get the county to reassess the land values, which is eight of the nine council members said in 2000, "We would have never left this tax if not for the terrible assessments that we got for the county." The problem is with the county and we have to lean on the county executive to get them to face this. It's not his fault. He didn't do it. He inherited it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Yvonne Brown. I live in the Hill and I wanted to say to my last speaker, I was saying to myself, "He speaks very well, doesn't he? Speaks very, very well." And it seems like he knows a whole lot of what he's talking about because he can put the numbers. But I don't agree with, this is the reason because of your statement. I don't agree with that. But that's why we're supposed to be here, so we can get all sides. I wanted to say, I went to the meeting, I went to that farce that you took and started because it shouldn't have been. It could have been up here. All the years I've been here, they said the difference was you have 200 here, 235. For 35 people, you put the handicap, you just throw them aside, we can't go to the bathroom. That was a farce. And I keep telling you, and you don't seem to understand that you are a businessman and that's the way you're trying to run this government, but you can't do it. See, I worked for the state. I was a caseworker. I saw how rules were done and you change them anytime you feel like it. But please forgive me, I didn't mean to go off like that. You see this picture here, it has Cody Murphy. I stood beside that young lady and we talked, we really did. And I want to say to the mayor, that you always, you have your young people, you have your groups that you pick, but we never know who's who. But I'm saying to you, mayor, if you have another committee with young people, please pick this young lady, please. This woman, this young woman, she has a lot of insight. We sat and we talked, she said, "I just met you and we're just talking." And I mean it. You don't have to listen to me, but please try to listen to somebody that does know. Plus, there was a lady that talked about her mother being killed. There was a bunch of people over there, a bunch of men. She talked about her mother, and they couldn't even look at her, they booed her. Booed this lady. But when she went past, I did grab her and I did hug her and say, "God bless you." Because she said she was speaking for her mother because her mother was dead. Even though you think, you men and whoever think that we should be entitled to have a gun that can shoot 50 bullets, we don't need it. I keep saying, send it over there to the war, not in our area. We can stop it. You know what the problem is? You're scared now because the young boys got these guns, but at one time, we couldn't have guns. You understand, we wasn't allowed to have guns. Now they got them and you let them have it. I told you, the man said, "They're selling AK-47s. Go tell city council." I came down and told you, only Ms. Carlisle came to that meeting. Even Mr. Peddulo didn't come. Please, take it to Harrisburg like you did to Police Review. Take your bill to Harrisburg like the Police Review.
Good morning. David Teszotur, Highland Park. This is a time in the history of the city that is extremely important. The future of the city is going to be determined by what is being done on major infrastructure projects that City Council needs to weigh in on. Right now, we have the landside terminal at the airport being torn down and the idea of replacing it. When that airport was built and started planning back in the 80s, Tom Forrester announced that that was to be a second downtown. Well, the region hasn't been able to support that with a declining population. Yet it's been on the books and continues to be on the books as that is to be the new central business district with a land use plan similar to Brasilia, Brazil. Years ago, when there was a visiting professor of poly-science from Brazil and I mentioned that, he said, "Oh, please tell them not to do that." The thing is, back in the 80s, we had an opportunity, or excuse me, in the 90s, we had an opportunity to take the money from the airport busway, which used all of its money on half the project, and have rapid rail connection between Steel Plaza and the airside terminal, which 10 minutes away would have been closer than being in the parking lot of the airport itself to your plane. Right now, we need to start thinking about with the BRT, which is purely to subsidize real estate speculation in the Uptown area. We need to start thinking in terms of applying that money toward having that rapid rail connection and putting the landside terminal in the city. Move the airport into the city that way effectively rather than moving the city out to the airport. What happens with this is something that's of major impact. It's going to affect the region for decades to come. The Southern Beltway is being built to bypass the city, to take it to the outer suburbs, to the east and to the south, just like they did with 279 to Butler, and we saw what happened with Cranberry. So I'm urging people, anybody who wants to run for office now, to step forward. This is a major election. We have county executive and county council races as well as city council races to step forward and take up something that is extremely important on the future, not just to those who are flying, but also to the poor who, with their jobs out there, would have to abandon the city. So if you want to run for office, you can contact me at run@openpittsburgh.org and I'd be happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. See no other speaker, we will now go to the roll call. We ask the clerks, please, call the roll.
Mr. Cargill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to page four. There's a request to take Public Safety Service Committee first. Mr. Lavelle is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1308, Resolution amending Resolution 231 of 2018 entitled, "Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City into an agreement with the Housing Authority of the City for providing of police services at HACP properties over a three-year term in order to update account numbers."
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation? If no conversation, all those in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. That takes us to the next bill, please.
Bill 1310. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Dolan Consulting Group in an amount of $9,950 for verbal de-escalation training for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police.
Need a motion, Mr. Lavelle.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation? Ms. Harris.
Who's here?
Is someone here for this bill, I think? If you come for it, please.
Why he's doing everything today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, can you just give us a rundown on this bill?
We brought in Dolan Consulting to deliver train-the-trainer material to our Academy instructor trainers in verbal de-escalation. We will turn around and deliver that to the whole bureau.
Okay.
Need you to say your names for the...
I'm sorry, Lieutenant Matt Lackner. I'm the Training Academy Director.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant.
Thank you. You're doing everything today.
Yeah, apparently.
Any other conversation?
Thanks, Lieutenant.
No other conversation. All those in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay.
Thank you.
Since we're on page five, let's just go through it. Public Works Committee is next. Ms. Kelsmith, Mrs. Kelsmith is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1295. Resolution amending Resolution Number 701 to now read as follow. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City to enter into agreements with PennDOT under which PennDOT will make improvements to and transfer industrial highway approximately 1.2 miles of roadway to the city and the city will transfer to PennDOT two current city street segments.
I need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
One second.
We had a thorough conversation about this last week. Any other conversation? If no conversation, all those in favor, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. We have a new paper.
Bill 1312. Resolution authorizing the transfer by the City to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation certain public right-of-way and temporary construction easement rights on certain property of the 32nd Ward of the City in cooperation with a PennDOT construction project.
Motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation about this project?
Is this your district? I'll defer to Councilwoman Gross.
Well, this is the bill we talked about last week. It's split pretty evenly, right? This is, I'm sorry, Baum and Center?
No.
No, we passed.
We passed that, yeah.
We passed that.
We're in the second bill. We're in pale 1312.
Would you indulge me so I could say a few words about the Center and Baum one that we held for a week? Thank you. I apologize for...
As long as Teresa...
Yeah. You can say whatever you want.
As long as Teresa...
Thank you. I appreciate it. We were sidebar-ing and I apologize. So I did get a call from the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure, so thank you. I actually talked to both the Assistant Director and the Director last night, and I just wanted to touch on a few items. I do understand that this was passed originally in 2015, and so we had this long conversation about it last night and I said, you know, she asked me rightly, "Well, what's changed?" I said, "Actually, there are things that have changed since 2015, right? In 2015, we were, I think, not facing in my district as much pressure for pedestrian and bike safety as we are now, and especially around the roads that PennDOT owns, like Forbes and Oakland." It was my constituent, Susan Hicks, who was struck by a vehicle and killed. And then there was a year-long struggle to try to figure out how to make those changes on the PennDOT road. And Councilwoman, I know that you understand what I'm saying because it's exactly because you want changes to PennDOT Road in your district that is what's happening for the bill. And so then I asked, "Well, why do we have to swap, right? So why is this a quid pro quo? Why do we have to give PennDOT Street that they don't currently have and that could potentially make it more difficult to make the changes we want in a very highly densely populated part of, again, the convergence of Friendship, Liberty, and Shady Side?" And there really wasn't a great answer for that. So it was like, "Well, so that we keep the total miles kind of zero." And I was like, "Okay, why do we have to do that? How much of a cost is it? Is it like a dollar a year? Is it a million dollars a year? How much are we saving by having this many miles under PennDOT ownership?" And so she did email me first thing this morning, some response, and it does add up significantly, but I still kind of want to raise the more general question. I'm not sure that we have to assume that we need to keep the same exact total miles for PennDOT. Then there is a more complicated question at this Baum and Center intersection, which is that PennDOT desires to have its kind of continuous routing. And so this is a place because we took back part of the Penn Circle pieces, and I'm not exactly, I don't have that exact time in front of me, that these are the replacement pieces that PennDOT desires. And I say the word desires because I'm not sure that it's required. So I just, I'm not going to obstruct this one. I do understand this is something we voted on in 2015. This is honestly, this week, just a technical amendment to change specific, you know, square feet. You know, it's literally just changing a little bit of square feet. But I do think we should keep that conversation from me. She made me somewhat relieved that PennDOT itself is moving forward at the state level in urban PennDOT Street technical manual, so that it would be different than, you know, rural highway PennDOT technical manual, which is kind of what we've been fighting with them about in so many places in the city, that they could always refer to, let's say Butler Street, PennDOT Road, as a highway. Five-year-olds have to cross that street to get to school in the morning. And certainly, we know there are lots of people and it's very densely populated with pedestrians and you really don't want it to be engineered like a highway because you don't want people to die. So thank you for the moment. I just wanted to say why I was questioning it last week. I understand that, you know, this is one that we're just changing from four years ago. I certainly feel your pain in your district about dealing with PennDOT. But in the future, I think it's worthy conversation to say, "Do we really need this many miles owned by the, you know, Pennsylvania Department of Transportation that are inside the city?" All right, so I'll stop there. Thank you for your time.
Right, Councilwoman Smith.
So I just want to say, I do share your concerns a lot with PennDOT, but I think that we should have a conversation, maybe even a post-enchanted, but first we'll have a conversation with PennDOT. We've had it before, but there's new leadership there, new administration somewhat, or re-elected in some form on the state level. But I think also talking to our elected officials here on the state level, you know, the Allegheny County elected officials on the state level, our state reps, our senators, and talk to them about the importance of working with us and what we want to see. To me, one of the most disturbing things that we cannot do in the City of Pittsburgh is set our own speed limits. And to me, you know, the fact that somebody's setting a speed limit in Harrisburg for a street in, you know, a little esplan that they may have never seen before is concerning to me. So I think that those are conversations I think we should have, and I'll be happy to schedule that meeting and invite us all. And I do think that for us, you know, we want bike infrastructure in our district as well, and, you know, we've had a cyclist killed on one of our roads. And, you know, yet constant pleas to PennDOT to address those issues and to, you know, put safe bike infrastructure in place. But I differ a little bit because I think that we have trails available. And, you know, my opinion has always been that we should have taken our time in doing the bike infrastructure. I think we rushed to put in some infrastructure to, you know, appease people, but we weren't really making sure safety and connectivity were all really very engaging and really hearing from the public. And I think, and that we had all the pieces in place. I would have loved to have seen this taken five years and said to bike Pittsburgh or to, you know, cyclists enthusiasts who may not belong to bike Pittsburgh, that, you know, "We really want to build a great infrastructure in terms of, you know, bike infrastructure, but we need to address our current infrastructure needs and then let's come up with a really great plan to make safe, you know, bike trails for everyone." I think we probably could have came up with some really great things. I think the pressure to complete trails and to do things, sometimes it's not always in the best interest of the cyclist either because sometimes we're putting bike lanes in places where it's not always so safe. And, you know, wouldn't it be great if we had something that went up and over a road instead of always on a dangerous road? In our area, on West Carson, we are landlocked, so, you know, the railroad and PennDOT and the Port Authority, they're prohibiting us from putting a safe bike lane in. And it is dangerous. Obviously, someone was killed there. But we do have a trail that goes up and over the entire length of it. And so I think that would be something that would be, you know, a way that we could really connect our trails and do some really great things. And Henry in the mayor's office has been doing great work, including blocking the trails himself, trying to figure out how we can put something in place there. But I do think that we need to have this meeting and have some conversations with PennDOT. And I'm happy to schedule because I think that there's a lot of things we could be doing differently, including setting our speed limits, working on safety on our roads that we do have concerns with. In our area, the state has a lot of roads in our area. And the other part is county because we border the most boroughs. So we're torn between so many obstacles in our district between the county, state, and the City of Pittsburgh and other private roads that I think, municipalities, I think that it would be great to have a conversation with PennDOT on how we can do what's best for our area and hopefully get a little bit more authority in making our roads safe for pedestrians, motorists, and cyclists. So I'll schedule that meeting.
Thank you very much. Ms. Strasburger.
Don't want to belabor this too much, but I just have to get this in. So I was curious after we had this discussion last week about why the need for the swap, and I did a little bit of digging and understood that it's state law. I mean, that it's, that we have to...
Everything is.
We have to, we have to. I didn't realize that for, you know, at the time last week, but that it is state law that if we are, you know, giving, if we are taking some roads from PennDOT, that we have to give an equal amount back to them. I don't wish to give any more roads to PennDOT. I wish that we could, you know, keep the roads that we have and because we have more flexibility then to, you know, initiate street design changes and do what we need to on the streets. But, you know, until that's fixed, I don't know what the alternative is. And that leads me to an initiative that I've been working on, not an initiative, a will of council I've been working on with my staff and now in conversations with Doleme about. There are a number of state laws that prohibit the municipalities across the state from doing things on traffic and mobility. from doing things on traffic and mobility, and safety, and pedestrian safety, and bike safety. It's not just about setting our own speed limits, it's also about using radar and lidar to detect speeding vehicles, and it's a whole number of things. And so there's a whole laundry list of items that if we could get changed at the state level, we would have a greater ability to be able to impact pedestrian, bicycle, and driver safety at the local level. And so I'm currently working with Domey on a will of council to ask our state representatives and senators to make those changes and support various versions of bills that have been introduced in the past. And I'd be more than happy, in addition to Councilwoman Kell Smith, your idea of meeting with PennDOT and state-level officials, to work with anyone who would like to on that will of council and collaborate on that.
Thank you. And can I just add also that, it sounds great to take back all our roads, but the money's got to come from somewhere. And so, you know, we have to have our priorities, and if PennDOT's going to pay for some of the things that they're, they're taking, then great. And, I mean, I can tell you, they've done jobs in our area that we couldn't afford to do, you know, quite frankly, especially on Noblesdon Road and places that are state-maintained roads, and they do them, and they do them right when they come in. And so we, I mean, I wish we had the equipment, I wish we had the money, I wish we had the manpower or workforce that they have, but we just, we simply can't do some of the things that they do. So I just want to say, there is some benefit to it, so we just got to figure out that. And as long as they'd work with us, I think it would be great. So I'll schedule that, those briefings, those meetings.
Takes us back to Bill thirteen twelve. Any conversation on Bill thirteen twelve? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay, that will take us to the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, the Honorable Mr., Cora Carter is the chair, and so we have a new paper.
Bill thirteen eleven, resolution adopting the planned revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Pittsburgh Produce Terminal redevelopment project. The existing building will be converted from produce warehouse office space into a combination retail, restaurant, entertainment, and office center. The parking lot to the rear will be updated to current standards. The site is located on the north side of Smallman Street, between Sixteenth and Twenty-first Streets, in the second ward of the city.
Motion, Mr. Carter.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Uh, is, the only one I can think of with Grant, Grant, are you here for this? No. So I, we'll just motion to hold one week.
Your second.
Second.
One week, yeah.
Your second.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay, takes us to the front of the agenda, which would be, uh, give me just a second to take these off mine. All right, it takes us to Finance and Law, of which I am the chair, we have a new paper.
Bill thirteen oh three, resolution amending Resolution Number Eight Seventy-Eight, authorizing the fee schedule for 2019 pursuant to Chapter One Seventy of the City Code, so as to replace the attached fee schedule and update the effective date.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay, next bill, please.
Bill thirteen oh four, resolution amending Resolution Eight Forty-three of 2018, by changing the budget year from 2018 to 2019, providing for the issuing of a warrant in the total sum of eight thousand dollars in favor of Kathleen Kusenek and her attorney, fully releasing the city from all claims and liability for alleged damages as described in a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second, any conversation?
Discussion.
Discussion, you would, is there, I don't know if there's anyone from here, I think that would have to be, um, I suppose the Law Department, do you want someone from the Law Department to come up and talk about it, Ms. Harris?
Yes, please.
All right, could you request somebody from the Law Department to talk about it? We'll leave this open.
Because it doesn't say that we need an executive session, so they should be able to talk to us about it publicly.
So we will call for someone in the Law Department to come. We have two papers that can be read together, thirteen oh six, thirteen oh seven.
Bill thirteen oh six, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Carol Katz in an amount not to exceed three thousand two hundred dollars for mediation services rendered to the parties in a federal litigation case. Bill Number thirteen oh seven, resolution amending Resolution Twenty-nine, providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of Kramer, Mainz, and Associates in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars in full and final settlement of an action filed with the Pittsburgh Human Relations Commission and cross-fired with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission by changing the budget year from 2018 to 2019.
Need a motion to hold both for executive sessions?
Some both.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay, next bill, please.
Bill thirteen thirteen, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title One, Administrative Article Eleven, Human Resources Definitions, and also at Municipal Benefit Plan Number Two, municipal benefits in order to allow interest payments on withdrawals from the municipal pension plan and to authorize the calculation of interest.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve, very brief discussion.
Need a second, Ms. Cross, need a second.
Second.
Ms. Cross.
Thank you. This is technical amendments in nature, as the, the piece states, in order to allow interest payments on withdrawals from the municipal pension plan and authorize a calculation of interest. Through the course of this, we've worked with the Law Department, with our Budget Director, Bill Urbannick, the Controller's Office, and the Pension Board to make these technical amendments.
All right, Ms. Harris.
Ah, yes, is this for employees that are leaving the city?
Uh, yes. I think I understand your question.
Yeah, it wouldn't be any other employees that have their pension plan, it would just be employees that...
Yes.
Are leaving. Okay.
The other conversation, seen no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay, we have another bill?
Bill thirteen sixteen, resolution providing for a professional services agreement or existing agreements for consultant services, but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the city Controller's Office at a cost not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second. Controller's Office, someone's here from the Controller's Office, do you, anyone have any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. Thank you very much, Doug, good to see you. There is invoices on the table, need a motion for the invoices.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor of invoices signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. There are no interdepartmental transfer, there are P-card approvals, they are also on the table, I need a motion for the P-cards.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion.
Discussion on the P-cards, Ms. Harris. Mike, I think I see you from a corner of my eye.
Morning. Mike, you want to state your name and what office?
Council Budget Office, Bill for Bill today.
Okay. Uh, under Public Works, second page, at the bottom, it's the second one up.
Yeah, the tire repairs?
Yes.
Uh, yes, we do have most tire repairs under contract, I believe this is for the, the larger tires, the heavy equipment.
Okay.
So that's why it's a one-time purchase rather than a contract.
Okay, purchase, that's the question I have, it says repair here?
Yes.
Is it, it's something that we're purchasing? Are we doing it, or is it...
I'm sorry, we purchased the tire repair, we didn't actually purchase the tire.
Okay.
I misspoke.
Okay, so it's not from down at the garage, this is separate?
Yeah, I believe it's the heavy equipment division.
Okay.
But I could double-check the invoice if you want.
Would you please?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I'll just pass it, I just, well, oh, and the other question was, do you know, you see more and more on the P-cards, is there certain limits for certain offices for the P-card?
Just what's ever budgeted in the office.
Everything?
Or the division of yours or anything. Yeah, there's no, I mean, there's, there's three thousand dollar limit per purchase.
Okay, that's what, okay, that's what I wanted to know. And is there any limit of the three thousand for each office?
Uh, there's a three thousand dollars per purchase, but for multiple purchases, it can be up to the amount budgeted in that line item in the department.
Okay, thank you.
The other questions? No questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay, that takes us back to the Law and Finance Committee, which I believe is, that would be Bill thirteen oh four, which is on the table, we have someone from the Law Department, if you please come through the table, Ms. Harris has the floor. Please start off with your name and position.
Lawrence Baumiller, Assistant City Solicitor.
Good morning. I was just wondering, on the thirteen oh four...
Yes.
Was there an executive session on this one?
We did have an executive session back in 2018, I believe it was in October. This case was settled, and it was submitted for payment in 2018. The plaintiff, we're not sure why, has yet to sign the release, so we could not release the check in 2018, so we're just changing the budget year from 2018 to 2019. Presumably, we will be cutting her a check this year, but she has to sign the release first.
Okay, do you know if this was property on, they're both on East Street, one's by Perry High School and one's...
Yes, this is on East Street, close to Perry High School, sort of beneath Perrysville Avenue.
Okay, so they're just settling, or did we get the water issue taken care of?
We are settling it, um, we had a motion for summary judgment that was denied, unfortunately, but, you know, the city does not believe we have any liability here, but this amount is less than we would pay for, for experts to go to trial with.
Okay, and they're, they're, they're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the PennDOT has also settled, as has the PWSA. The PWSA is going to be doing some additional testing in the area, but the city of Pittsburgh doesn't own any of the facilities, we don't own the road, well, we don't own Perrysville Avenue, that's a state highway, and we don't own the pipes.
Okay, so, uh, it's still ongoing with the state and PWSA, the city's just on their way out?
The state is settling as well, they settled, I believe, I believe their settlement amount was twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And the PWSA is also paying twenty thousand dollars, but the PWSA will also be doing additional testing in the area. PWSA had done some exploratory testing when the lawsuit was originally filed, well, even before the lawsuit was filed, and couldn't find any leaks in their lines, so they're going to go further, try to look in their own lines, and then also see if they can find something from the sewer laterals of private properties.
Okay, so, if there's still a problem, there's still ongoing issues with PWSA?
Potentially, but because of the release, we won't be liable.
We won't?
We won't. It runs with the land, so even for future property owners.
Okay, but you don't know if PWSA would still be...
That's, uh...
If you could check on it for me?
They won't be liable to pay more money, but they do have, under the agreement, they do have some ongoing testing requirements.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other conversation? No, I'll just talk to you.
Well, I have the Law Department here. Something's very important in my district, really just is escalating today, St. Basil's, you may or may not know of St. Basil's.
I grew up in Overbrook.
Oh, you did, okay, good, good, so this hopefully is near and dear to your heart, and...
I went to St. Norbert's.
Okay, yeah, so, so, you know, maybe we can get together, Yvonne, apparently this thing's held up in court, this building needs to come down desperately, it's wide open again, people are running in and out of there, somebody bought the mortgage, it's in some legal mess, so can we, whatever, meet and talk about pushing this forward?
Is it the old school building?
It's the old school building, right, St. Basil's, it's, it's, it's just a haven right now for a lot of bad things, and we need to take care of it.
I'll mention it to Yvonne, she'll contact your office.
We met about six months ago or so, Yvonne wasn't there, but apparently it was in court, and we were going to hear about it within thirty days, and I haven't heard anything since, so...
Do you know who you met with?
Uh, the former, uh, was it, maybe it was Yvonne, I, I'd have to check on that.
Okay, I'll, I'll mention it to her.
Yeah, yeah, but we met specifically to talk about that, so it was, you know, it's, it's on their radar. The other thing is, I just want to say how proud I am of this council, look at us, you know, there was nobody on the road this morning, and, uh, we're full house, we're, we've got a full house here, so, uh, so, um, okay.
If I can make it, anybody can make it.
Ms. Smith.
I just, to the comments that you were making about the private property and it being a problem, I'm just wondering, and I don't want any answer now, I don't want to belabor the conversation, what legally can be done in terms of public safety, in terms, either eminent domain, or taking the property and demolishing it, whatever, I just think, you know, we need to think outside the box of how we're handling some of these properties. And sometimes you see other municipalities all around us doing things that we're not able to do. I just said to somebody, I noticed that Craft and Borough, one of the reasons we have delayed some of our demo for properties that really do need demolished, we have some that we want to, you know, obviously, you know, restore and renovate, but we have some that really, they'll, they'll never be able to be restored. And so the reason that we had taken such a step back in terms of demo was because the cost, because the county or state had told us that we had to dispose of asbestos better than what we had been, and that there was, so it, it really escalated the cost from like around eight thousand dollars to over thirty to fifty in some cases, you know, depending on the property.
Yeah.
But yet I noticed in Craft and Borough, they're still demolishing property for five, eight thousand dollars, and I don't know how they're following, if they're following the same guidelines, but I think it's only if you're, that's why people compare and say, well, they do this in the borough, but, you know, the city can't do that. Well, that's why, because are they following the same guidelines and same rules that cities being made to adhere to? And so I just want to, I just think that we need to look outside the box and figure out what they're doing in other boroughs to address properties, as Councilman Colco mentioned.
Okay, I'll make a note, I'll send an email to the solicitor and to the attorney from our office that handles PLI, with regard to property that, you know, does need to come down. We can demolish property without taking it either in a tax sale or by eminent domain, and, you know, of course, we get, our budget is limited on doing that, of course, but we can do that, and we can place a municipal lien on the property to potentially recoup that money if the property's ever sold.
You can also now, I just want to say, we have incorporated the Act Ninety, State Act Ninety into our code over ye, years ago, years ago. I've not seen it used or enforced within the city of Pittsburgh, but what I will say, it may be, but I have not, I'm not familiar with any case, but I would say that under that, you could actually lien the private property of the property owner. So if they have a property that needs demolished in the city of Pittsburgh, but they own a house in Mount Lebanon or Super Saint Clair, you can lien their property in Mount Lebanon or Upper Saint Clair, their personal residence. So I just think we need to look at those laws and really start using them and implementing them in ways that benefit the city of Pittsburgh. And that's all I'll say, is because you do have those tools available, we just don't use them, so, thank you.
The other conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would remind everyone that this afternoon at one thirty, an executive session is scheduled relative to city legal matters. Also a reminder that there's a cablecast post-agenda discussion, originally scheduled for next Tuesday, February fifth, at one thirty, it has been canceled. Any motions of resolutions? If not, I will say one. So I was listening, I was...
You sent one. No, we don't, no, just kidding, sorry.
I was listening to the state, I was listening to the discussion.
I read Laffy Taffy, sorry.
I listened to the discussion of state law, right, and I'll just, my district is very different, right, very, very different. I have, in my district, if you go, there's almost a hidden community up near Frick Park, where you have extraordinarily expensive, beautiful, beautiful homes, right, beautiful homes. If you go to Homewood, unfortunately, even though we're redeveloping it, there's still a lot of vacancies. On Monday, there was a shooting, a dead body was found right across the street from my church. If you go to another area mine, which is Stanton Heights, part of it, it looks suburban, right? Their number-one concern when I have community meetings in Stanton Heights is deer, right? Well, we, the state has so, you know, made it, you know, we're not allowed to hunt, you Well, um, we, the state has so, you know, made it, you know, we're not allowed to hunt, you may or may not know that, we can't hunt in the city property, city, city, even though there's a park, you can't hunt in the city, can't, can't kill the deer, you can feed them, but you can't kill them, right, you can't kill them with bow and arrow. And it just, it interests me, what in the world, in the city limits, does anyone need? Whether it's Homewood, or Squirrel Hill, or Frick Park, what in the world do you need with an assault rifle? What are you gonna do with it, right? It can go through walls, it can go through structures, right? It will go through, it's gonna stop when it hits something, what in the world, and I, I listen at all these suburban people, right, who live nowhere near my communities, who have no, who on a normal day, I don't even think drive through most of my district. I, I just think state, we have legislators in Harrisburg who live in suburban, rural, not suburban, many of them rural communities, right? They have nothing to do with the urban environment, and yet they are obstacles to our ability to make our city safer. And for reasonable, and, and something's wrong, uh, something's wrong, I won't get into the, the, uh, the specifics. But the reason that I am so, you know, for me, it's very simple, and I'm, I'm using this since we're all here, you know, we have 300 million guns. We have 300 million guns that kill 30,000 people in the United States every year, right? More guns you have, the more people that are killed, that's true, that's not a myth, you can do the research, if you have more guns, more people are killed. We can have other conversations, if you want to stop people from being killed, get rid of guns, if you get rid of guns, you get rid of homicides. I am proud to stand with, uh, uh, Councilman O'Connor and Councilwoman Strasburger, who are making this state, this stance amidst lots of criticism, lots of criticism, and, um, all the years I've been, this is my 12th year on council, the public hearing we had on guns was the first time I was ever frightened as a member of council. The first time I've ever been frightened. I, I, I listened to some of the people, I looked at them, and I knew some of the people, you could see the anger. It wasn't a civil conversation about policy, it was anger. And even on my way out, uh, some of the people, um, tried to stop me on my way to my car, I never talked about it, I just ignored them and kept going. I am proud of, I, I think, and I didn't say anything, I think that Council President Kraus, um, handled the meeting with dignity and with, um, deportment. And it was, it made us safe, and it gave everybody the opportunity for free speech. What the public doesn't know is that we are actually not obligated to listen to people from the suburbs. If you are not a resident of the city or pay taxes to the city, you actually have no right to give public comment into city. We simply allow you the courtesy because, well, we're open government, you know, we're not, we do not try to deprive people of free speech, so...
I wish the suburbs would give our residents the same courtesy, because they don't.
They do not, but my point, though, is that, is that, is that, I simply, I simply want to say that I think, and I know that the governor is gonna introduce some, some, I will stand by my comments, all deaths, homicides, suicides, domestic violence, mass shootings, any of them that occur with guns should be prevented, and we should do everything in our power to, to prevent and to reduce that number. And what we have done in council is made a moral statement. We've made a moral statement, this is not about law, there are times, you know, we, we've had slavery legal in this country. We've had discriminations about, against LGBT community, which were unlawful, we had marriage discrimination, which was unlawful. We, we've had a history of our country of having unjust laws. There comes a time that people of good conscience must stand up and say, this is wrong. And if that becomes troubling, okay, you know, if that means we get threatened, which we all have been, you know, we've had some ugly, although we don't say it publicly, we've gotten ugly emails and ugly statements from people, okay, there comes a moment, and this is that moment, right, where the majority of council, maybe not everyone, but the majority of us, I think, maybe all of us, are going to stand up and say, hopefully, enough is enough. We have, you know, for me, it's this week, right, I had two shootings in Homewood Monday, right? I'm gonna have more, right, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen every month, it's not gonna happen, you know, it's gonna happen every month. Every month, someone in my district is gonna get shot, every month, every month like clockwork, maybe not every week, but every month, I'm gonna have a shooting in my district, right? And it's gonna be some illegal gun and some kid that got gun from some suburban that sold it for drugs, and I know how this is gonna go, right? It's gonna happen every month, and, you know, it's gonna be some of them I know, some of my family, I'm gonna experience that. So I have, I don't know, I, I guess, we gotta do something, we can't let this occur with our kids dying, people getting shot. And the state so far has done nothing to help us. So I stand with you, I, and I don't, again, I'm sorry, we, since it's out in the cold, I'm gonna tell you, I stand with the two of you, I thought what you've done is brave, you have my support. Um, and, and we will see what the end will be, I'm proud of what the council has done. I think this isn't over, I think there'll be more ugliness, but there comes a time that you stand for what you believe in. And even if it causes you some distress, even if we get threats, even if we get accosted, well, I'll be able to go home and tell my children, not yet grandchildren, although my son gets married in June, right, I get to tell my kids that their father stood up for what he believed in. Whatever happens, he stood up for what he believed in, and I think that's more important than anything else, that we have stood up and made a moral statement, and let the law take care of itself. So I was waiting for the time, and since we're here on a cold day, right, I figured I'd, I'd use this time to at least say publicly what I have not said privately. I'm very proud of our president, very proud of Cory and, and, um, and Ms. Strasburger for what she's done, I'm, I'm, I'm very proud, Erica, I'm, I'm proud of what we've done. And, and, and we're gonna go for it, this will not, we will not stop, this is just the beginning. Sorry, but I just wanted to at least make this statement, because I've not, I've been very quiet about it, but I thought this would be a good time, since we're talking about state and the state people who will not help us. Other conversations, um, I saw Ms. Smith first and Ms. Harris.
I'll just say that, um, while I appreciate the concerns, and I do want to say, um, you know, I, I have not made up my mind how I'm gonna vote on any of these bills. I do have concerns, and I've said that very publicly, one, if I thought it was going to stop the shootings in Homewood, um, that'd be a different story. But the fact of the matter is, the guns we are banning are not, are suggesting to ban are not the guns that are killing the kids in the African-American community, quite frankly. As a matter of fact, they are the guns, the guns that we are suggesting that we ban are the ones that they're being arrested for having. So they're actually being disproportionately affected in a negative way, because there, um, there's more arrests in the African-American community and the immigrant community in terms of the guns we're trying to ban than any other community, so they're disproportionately affected in a negative way. But the guns where that they're, that are killing kids in the, um, communities that are struggling, um, are not the guns we're, we're talking about. The, and, and I think people don't understand a lot of the, the laws, I think this really came from, and, I just want to say this, I think this came from a really painful place. I think everybody wants to see something done after the shooting, um, at the synagogue, at Tree of Life. I think everybody wanted to see some, some response, but I also wanted to see a response for all the shootings that have been occurring in our city for, for years. And we have had a response, I want to say, we have touted that gun violence is down in the city of Pittsburgh. We had, you know, our chief and others have been on the news talking about the efforts that you, um, and, and Councilman Lovell and the mayor have really put some funding behind and supported, so gun violence is down, gun violence, according to the FBI, is down across the country. So I think that when we're making these cases about violence, we actually need to address the issues that are really underlying. And I think the gun violence law and the, and, and everything about gun violence has helped the Democrats and has helped the Republicans get elected, and, and that's who they've helped. This battle has never really trickled down to help the people. And so I, I'm not here just to pretend and just to play politics with, especially with people's lives, I have concerns, I don't want to take away people's rights. I put, I swore to God, I put my hand up to God and put my hand on the Bible and took an oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the state of Pennsylvania. And so that means something to me, and if you want elected officials who that means nothing to you, then that's, that's a different story. But I do think that we need to have more control over our municipality and over our city, um, and I do think the state prevents us in many ways of doing that. And, um, while I think we have some great leadership and some people that really do care and really do want to help, I mean, for me, it's Senator Fontana has been very helpful. So I, I think we have people that want to do things, we know that there are people that are preventing us from doing so. And when I hear the comments, even though my mind is not made up, when I hear the comments and the way my colleagues and the mayor are being treated via social media, it makes me think, do I want to have, do these people having guns, because they do seem, those comments do seem unstable. And I get people get upset when you're talking about taking their rights away, whatever the right is, I would be too, I would be upset too. But I would never treat or talk to a person the way some of these people are talking to, our elected officials in our city and not coming from the city of Pittsburgh. I don't like my colleagues being disrespected, I certainly don't like them being threatened, and, um, you know, it really makes me wonder how I'll vote in the end on all these bills, whether I have different votes on each, or, you know, um, whether there will, some amendments, I'm looking forward to the amendments. But I do think that it came from a place of trying to respond through a lot of pain, and, and I think that people need to understand that it's not about control, it's not about all this other stuff. And when, and at first I thought it was a lot about politics, well, it didn't at first, and then I heard some things, I thought, there's a lot of politics at play here. But I don't think that was my colleagues' intentions, I think that they really came from a place where they wanted to respond to their community who was hurting. And our city was hurting, and our city's still hurting over this, it is not, it's not an easy answer, and I, I wish that this would be the solution, to end all the shootings and to end, you know, um, the shootings that occur every week and the shootings that are mass shootings, I wish it were. I don't feel like it will be, and so I do have some concerns, and I really wish that we would change the, and not allow our, the federal government and the national politics determine what we do on a local, you know, political level. I wish we would all sit down and try to figure this out in a way that's reasonable, legal, and effective. And I really wish we yielded real results for our residents, I mean, I know that we have to do what we have to do, um, in each of our areas, but for me, it's, I want, I, more than anything, I want results, I'm not here for the politics, I know it sounds crazy to say that, but I don't, if I'm here tomorrow, great, if I'm not, that's great too. My life will go on, I lived 50 years before I ran for office, so, um, for me, it's, it will go on one way or the other. I did work in the private sector, I did work for nonprofits, so I, I had a life before this, I don't have a life after this. But what I do care about is yielding results for our people, but I want to say, having this open mind, um, does not mean I appreciate or, or like any of the comments and things that I'm seeing directed towards my colleagues and directed towards the administration and the mayor. And I, I just think that, um, those kinds of comments and those kinds of actions are gonna be the things that really lose the case for some of the people that are making, trying to make a case, um, in support of, of the, of gun ownership and the Second Amendment.
Ms. Harris?
Yes. Uh, I think Councilwoman Smith said quite a bit on, on what I would say on, on this issue of guns, because I remember the 93, uh, and the city couldn't do anything with the law that is on the books, because it's not councils to be able to vote on that. Or we would have had quite a few lawsuits and we would be paying out quite a bit of money. And, um, yes, we can go against the law and, and vote on things which are not ours to vote on. I remember that quite well, being on a school board and council was trying to take over and do votes for the school district, where we had a meeting right here between council and the school board, and a lot of feelings came out at that time. And, uh, we have to be careful what the people out in the audience, the people that we all represent, sometimes don't know the difference between a school board and city council and the state and the federal government. They think that any of us can deal with any of the laws, um, but that's not true. If you remember, uh, the piece on marijuana to basically only give a $25 fine.
Decriminalizing.
Decriminalizing marijuana that this council voted for, um, I think it's hurt some of the residents because, you know, they thought, well, what's a $25 fine, and ended up across the street in the courts. And, you know, when they explained to the judge, well, there's a new law the city council made, um, the judge says, nope, this is the law, and yes, it goes on your record, so a lot of people have been hurt thinking that that is something that we could do. So, um, I mean, I think one of the best things we could do is try working with the state on issues that are not ours to vote on. And you said that, uh, nobody's district's like yours. Well, I have very, very expensive homes in my district, I'm middle class, and I am very, very poor. So I don't see much difference between your district and my district. And...
Say it again?
I don't see much difference between your district and mine.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, depends on where you go in my district, and I'll take you for a ride to show you.
We're not, we're not gonna have the argument.
Well, wait a minute, I'm not arguing, I'm, let me finish.
When you say something that's absurd, I have to correct you, your district is not like my district at all.
I don't know, my district has the second most shootings in it.
Your district is not like my district at all, it's not like my district in composition, your district is not like mine in terms of vacancy, your district is not like mine in terms of...
You'd be surprised.
I'm not surprised because I'm...
You would be surprised.
Would not be surprised, because we do the calculations for the land bank, I know exactly what your district looks like.
Well, we could take a nice tour.
You look at all the objective, any objective characteristics.
Can I finish, Rhonda?
Yes, but don't, don't, don't make crazy statements, your district is nothing like mine.
It's not crazy, it's not a crazy statement at all.
Your district is not like mine.
Um, so going on from, uh, being the second most in, in shootings, that's why I wanted ShotSpotter brought here, and bringing ShotSpotter here, we, we started with your district, because it was number one and it was flat. And, uh, now we're working, we're still working on my district because of, and that's why I thought ShotSpotter would be, uh, a really great tool for us to have, and it has shown to be that way. There is still slavery in the city. And, um, I, I, I don't know if you realize that or not, but, uh, people are being used as slaves to this day. And I can't understand, and, uh, the governor was here that day, but they have now, which the governor okayed semi-automatics to hunt with, small game. Uh, so, that's happening out there too. Uh, and the other problem is if they've done away with a lot of mental health hospitals. And that's really a shame, because there's people that really need taken care of and really need, um, some, s- some mental health issues taken care of, and sometimes just no one knows where to go, or it's too full, and they sit back and wait. So, uh, I just thought I'd put my two cents worth in on the guns, I don't own a gun, I don't, I have never had a gun in my house, and I don't intend to. So, uh, I, I have very mixed feelings. I have lost, uh, the second most babies, uh, young people, brothers, sisters, mothers, dads, and grandparents. To nonsense with guns. And like our past, um, uh, chief of police, uh, said that the guns they pick up from them shootings, they foul off the numbers, or they're stolen, are lost, that's why we... That's why we dealt with the lost and stolen guns, and, um, I always figured, you know, if it's lost or stolen, it's not in the hands of an owner. So I agreed with that piece there. Um, but, uh, it's, it's very sad of what happens, and and so many innocent people have been hurt. So I just thought I'd throw my two cents worth in there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lavelle.
Thank you. Um, just briefly, the most interesting comments for me from our public hearing last week actually came from my children. Um, and one, thank you all for making them feel comfortable. I appreciate that. Um, but my son, as we were coming into the building, Rev, I don't think you were here yet, there were men outside that were standing there with their AR-15s and with their guns standing on the steps. And my son was sort of really confused and wanted to know, why are the guys outside have so much bigger guns than the police do? I didn't know how to actually answer that question, but he never let go of that, right? So even on our way home, he kept asking about the police's guns versus the other guy's guns, and why are their guns so much bigger, and they, are, are they supposed to protect us the same way the police do? And the second most interesting comment actually came from my daughter, who said, well, not if you're black. Which, at seven, I didn't really realize that this was a thing that she was now beginning to conceptualize. But to Teresa's point, I don't think the gun issue is a discrepancy of, well, blacks are being arrested just because we have more guns. This is a decades, century-old issue of how we police our communities, of how we interact with our communities. It's, so if we pass this, I don't believe the black community will be this, will have a higher rate of arrests, simply because we have guns, right? It's because of how we go into our communities, how we police them, how we interact with our children. That's, it's the same reason we know we don't smoke marijuana more than anyone else, but yet we go to jail more for it, right? And so that's a much larger issue that we as a council, as a society, have to figure out how to address, but nonetheless, it's an issue. So I just wanted to share that.
I just responded to that. I just wanna say, I do hear you, and I, but I also think that just because we know it's going to happen doesn't mean we add additional laws to make additional arrests and just ignore the fact that this, that the, the fact is there are more arrests in the African-American community and the immigrant community using current gun laws. And in other cities and other states, they're known as the Jim Crow laws. It's not endorsed by Black Lives Matters, and it's also, they're also known as the discrimination laws. I think those are facts. If you do some research across the country, that people are not embracing these laws as they are. And so I, I, you know, I think that there are concerns. And so we don't just ignore those concerns. We try to figure out ways to address the underlying concerns. And that's, that's my whole thing, is I like, I like real solutions, not, you know, news releases and not big PR things and not political responses. I like real responses that yield real results. And so for me, that's what it is. And I, I know it's much bigger than any of us could really take on, to be honest with you. And I think that's part of the problem. We're taking on something that really is much larger than us.
And I've, to that point, Councilwoman, I would simply say it's not an either-or. I think we need to do both.
I would at least suggest, and maybe all of you have already read it, there are a number of books, um, about this issue. Probably, uh, Michelle Alexander's book on the new Jim Crow is the best, um, the best, the best overall view of it, although there are other bu- books. If you're interested in this, in this, in this issue, it's one of the issues I read about. I'm sure, I'm willing to bring the books in. You don't have to buy them. You can read them free. Um, but it's, it's because I, it's me, my son and I, ever since he's really, really interested in it, so we talk about it all the time, right? Um, um, but I, I don't wanna leave, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't, and I, I do say, Ms. Coghill, I, I don't want the public to misunderstand our perspective. Our perspective is, the city gets better as a whole, right? We all believe that. The city will get better as a whole. And so I, I don't want the, I don't want us to, I think we will be united on this issue, one way or another. We'll speak, and we'll, we'll be united. Um, we, we, good policy will be good policy for all our communities, right? Good policy.
And good leadership will bring everyone together to try to figure out a solution that actually works and yields results.
May I interject, please, just momentarily? Ms. Coghill, I think we're getting very close to deliberation without a bill being on the table. I would just caution the remarks of council.
Ms. Coghill?
I'm sorry, say that again.
We're getting very close to deliberation without having a bill on the table. I think we need to caution our comments.
I'll, I'll cut off if that's.
I, I think that's a great warning. Ms. Coghill?
Oh, okay. Well, I'll, I'll go then. So, you know, I don't hesitate to say, I see both sides of the coin on this. I, I really do. Uh, you know, when I sit and I talk to, um, well, let me say first, I wanted to talk to Cory and Erica in private before we really, you know, aired this out. But I will say this, a, a miscommunication in this whole thing is, and I talked to Cory early on about, you know, people, when they read, when the gun activists read these bills, what they see is, um, trying to take all their guns away, okay? The beginning of trying to take all their guns away. And that's important to me not to be that way, because I'm, I was a sports, my father was an outdoorsman, you know, so we hunted, we fished and all that. So, so I'll say this, uh, the misconception is, and I think maybe the amendments will kind of clarify that a little bit, but, uh, you know, they read it, their attorneys, they read it completely different than what I read it, or, or what, what I think Cory's and Erica's intent was. So hopefully, that, that'll be clarified. Um, concerns of mine, you know, again, we'll, we'll talk in private about that, but, but I'll say there are two concerns of mine. Uh, it's what it's going to cost the city of Pittsburgh to defend, okay? Um, it's more of a practicality decision on, on my part just to even think about it. Um, besides that, it's, uh, you know, is it the right avenues? Um, you know, I, I'd like to, again, we'll, we'll talk about that in private, but, uh, that's all I can say.
On this cold snowy day, we all showed up for, we need a motion to excuse the absent member. I'm so sorry. I didn't see you, Erica.
That's okay. It was last minute. Um, I will just say this. I, um, I look forward to speaking with any and all council colleagues in private about this, this, these, the bills, um, and this issue at any time. But particularly after, I think, um, there's going to be a huddling up of, um, Councilman O'Connor and, and me and our staff to discuss the amendments that we've been sort of alluding to, but haven't really, um, hammered out yet. And second, I too want real results. And I want to reiterate that, you know, while these three bills are, um, something, they're not everything. And, um, I, I, I'm eager to have the conversation with my council colleagues, with all of you, about other measures that can be taken in addition to these three bills, um, that have been proposed so far. So, um, I, I hope that everyone knows that it's at least my position, that this is far from the end of the conversation. There's much more that's necessary to actually reap the results that we're, that we're looking for.
Thank you very much. With that being said, I'd accept the motion to approve the minutes that adjourned the meeting. Ms. Harris. It's a different topic?
Sort of.
A different topic we're trying to.
Okay, the only thing I wanna say is, the one thing it needs to be done is to make sure that they're using the laws in place when things happen like this. And, uh, not weaken them, but strengthen them. And I think that is a big problem too.
Very much. A motion to approve the minutes adjourned the meeting. It's been moved in second. All in favor, sent by saying aye.
Aye.
Producers, aye, we are, Jane!